Yeah.
Those are all the rules I've got to learn.
Hey, Rob, you think more on the public hearing on the, yeah, we're for Eric, they're gonna do?
We've met a few times with DOT. I had a meeting with the town manager maybe two months ago.
Yeah.
Didn't get an update. It's coming, probably 2026.
Oh, really?
I'm far out that far.
I thought it was people.
Yeah.
I know, it's gonna be a little bit longer.
It was. It's gonna be substantial.
Yeah.
Engineering.
Four there. It'll take two years to get that up to.
Okay, people, it is seven o'clock. Turn on the recordings.
Got it.
You good? You good? All right. This is the Enfield Planning Board. It is January 11th, 2023. I'm calling this meeting to order at seven o'clock. We are in the DPW conference room. And I don't see anybody who's joined us virtually at this point. If they do, we'll acknowledge them when they come in. Folks in the audience have all signed in? Got one. All right, so planning board members present from my left, starting with Linda.
Linda Jones.
Dan Kylie.
David Frack.
Phil Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Frank Carttarts, alternates.
Good bother, all.
And?
Whitney Banker, alternate and also recording secretary.
And our staff member.
Rob Taylor.
Okay. So Kate is not here. Kurt, will you be a voting member until she comes in?
I will.
Just so we know that she will come in. Okay. Public comments. Anybody have anything of interest that is not on the agenda? Everybody's here for the public hearing. Okay. Minutes. Let's look at the minutes of December 28th. Does anyone other than me have anything to say or question? Or add or delete?
I found none, and I'm curious as to what you found.
Okay, on line 61. With a background, I think she deserves a little stronger credentialing than a background. I don't know what the word wording would be, but.
Expertise?
I'd go with that. Moving down to 125. Three of us abstained from the vote, and I think it would be appropriate to say why we abstained, which is because we were members of the task force. Line 125.
Really?
Yeah.
Really what? Really, we abstained?
Well, I know you did, but I wasn't aware that it was because you were members of the task.
We didn't want to vote for ourselves.
I think you would've been fine either way.
Either way.
More than fine. We just. Been homeless.
Right, how it's done, David.
Yeah.
150. Dieback. D I E rather than D Y E. Yeah. Scooped through. Line 229. We are removing the principal dwelling language, not the principal building language, unless I've still got this totally backwards. That's right?
Yeah.
What line was that?
229. 288. I would suggest standards rather than restrictions. And that's it. Somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes of December 28th as corrected.
Seconded.
Okay, no one made any seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose extensions. The minutes of December 28th are accepted as amended. Vote was unanimous. Select Board Report, Kate is not here. Hearings, we have none. Conceptuals, we have none. Next, we have formal hearings on proposed amendments to the town zoning regulations. They are listed in order, and we'll take them in that order. And the format will be, we'll put the proposed amendment up on the screen. And if there's any discussion or questions from the board members, we will discuss. If anyone from the public has likewise has questions or discussion, we will hear the public. And then we will vote as to whether we are in favor of the amendment or not in favor of the amendment.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
There, it's actually a two-part process. You first have to vote on whether or not you want it to go on the ballot. And then you'll, then you have to vote on whether to recommend or not.
Okay, I stand corrected. Thank you, Dan. All right, so first one is ADU increase to two. And the amendment or proposed amendment will say, are you in favor of the adoption of the following amendment of the town of Enfield zoning ordinance? And this will be the addition of a new section, which we propose will be called Section 422. Accessory dwelling unit. A single apartment dwelling unit of no more than 800 square feet, containing no more than two bedrooms and one bathroom, as stated defined in RSA 674: colon 71 to 73 and below. Number one, not more than two accessory dwelling units may be created on a single lot in all districts in which single-family homes are allowed by right. Number two, accessory dwelling units may be internal to the principal structure, attached or detached. A, or 2A. Three dwelling units within the same structure are subject to regulation as a multifamily dwelling. 2B, a maximum of one ADU on a single lot may be detached. Number three. On lots not served by town sewer, the property owner shall obtain DES approval for a new onsite sewage disposal system design prior to the issuance of a building permit. The new system does not need to be installed unless the current system was never approved or is in failure. Number four, the accessory dwelling units and main dwelling units are exempt from district acreage density requirements and must remain under one ownership. Number five, where a new structure is required for an ADU, district setback requirements shall be observed. That's the text of the proposed ordinance. Any discussion from board members? Any discussion from members of the public?
I have one question as far as the quality of water is concerned. When you require the design of a new septic system to be offered, but not installed unless the present system fails, how long before people recognize that the system is failing and dumping raw sewage into the ground, which may be percolating downstream or down into the streams? That's a question that I have with regard to the, I should one say, inclusiveness of this allowance.
I think that's a very good question, and the reason that language is in there is because it's in the state statute. And we thought it would be prudent to just put that in our ordinance as an advisory, that somebody would need to get a septic system design before they would get a building, be able to get a building permit. And your question, I think, is a great one. We can't answer it. Hopefully, somebody at the state level could.
Okay, I understand that if an ordinance from the community is more restrictive than that of the state, then the community's ordinance takes precedent and vice versa.
Correct.
My concern is not necessarily that they have to have a new septic system put in. It's just the timeframe between when their septic system fails and it's recognized, so they do have to put one in, is where the contamination, I think, could be quite prolonged. And I don't know how you go about that, other than having sufficient inspection to ensure that the septic system is functioning.
So the town has a health officer in the form of our building inspector, Liam Erzweig. And this comes up fairly frequently for him. If there's a complaint, he acts on it immediately. And there's a, there's a process by which the health officer is responsible for declaring the emergency, so to speak, and taking corrective action. And that's in conjunction with state law and basically DHHS, the Department of Health, through that whole thing. And then they work hand in glove, obviously, with Department of Environmental Services, who's the licensing and inspecting authority for the state. So we have had that, say, for instance, on Mascomah Lake. We've had a couple of systems that have failed, and it's meant to be pretty quick because we don't want that to prolong.
Well, on, on small properties like most of the properties around the lakes, I can recognize where a failed sewer system would be recognized pretty quickly.
Yep.
But you've got somebody on 10 or 15 acres who's still uphill from water sources. Their septic system fails, it could go on for weeks or months before anybody says, hey, this seems something's wrong.
Yeah, that could go on if there was no ADU there either.
Yes, I'm not saying that this is, I'm just inquiring as to whether there's any way that we can make it a better surveillance of these kinds of things. And maybe there isn't, so we just, this is the luck of the draw.
Yeah, the inspector can only go on the property if there's a complaint.
Yeah.
Landowners don't normally complain.
No, personally.
It's normally a neighbor.
Okay.
Right?
I.
Yeah, that's the problem. You're right.
I'm learning.
I mean, we've seen it, I've seen it on Shaker Hill Road.
Yeah.
Because you could tell in the ditch. All of a sudden, there's green grass in the middle of the winter. Because there's a failed system.
Yeah, okay.
And a bit of a stench.
And a bit of a stench, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's one of those things in the statute that, yeah, you just have to have a design. You don't have to build it.
Right.
Because they have to, you have to show that the design is big enough for the number of bedrooms.
Exactly.
Okay, any other questions from the public? Any discussion on this issue from board members? If not, I will close the hearing on this issue, or on this amendment, and entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the ADU increase of two be put on the ballot.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Closed? None? Abstentions? None. Now we need a motion to see who supports it.
Now, you usually do that after you've done them all, because you have to know what the ballot is. And to recommend, you have to, you have to know what the total ballot is, so you recommend. You then go back.
We don't, we don't.
Go through them again.
We don't do, okay, we go through them again.
Go through them again. And whether or not we recommend or not.
Okay.
It's just, it's a formality.
Alrighty, so.
I don't think you have to do it that way.
Well.
Because each one's a standalone warrants.
You can if you want.
Yeah, I'm just saying I.
Right.
Because they're not tied to each other.
No, they're not.
Yeah, so.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Up to the board.
Should we vote our approval?
I make a motion that we recommend the article increasing ADU to two.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed? Abstentions? Okay. So the board recommends the amendment that increases the number of allowable ADUs to two. The vote was seven to zero. Next. Where do I vote?
You got a phone call?
Okay. All right. Next is an article to, Whitney, can you sit over there so you can throw that?
Just.
Oh, here he is.
Here he is.
Somebody was having trouble getting in on Teams. Just emailed them.
Okay. Okay, so the next article is Regulation of Use, Section 401.1, the R1 district. And this article is to change the minimum lot size to one-quarter acre on lots where town sewer is available. The words that are striped through in red will be struck and the highlighted text will be added. So I will read it. The minimum lot size shall be one acre, except for dwellings in which the minimum lot size shall be one acre per dwelling unit with on-locked water and sewer supply, but may be one-quarter acre lot size for a dwelling where municipal sewer is used. I think that's the end of it, isn't it, Rob?
Yeah, let me just jump out here and let somebody in.
Okay.
Trying to get in.
Did you guys hear that too?
Yeah, it did.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah, we got Becky and AJ and Tony.
So I guess we'll keep an eye on it. Sorry about that.
Okay. That's the end of it, Rob?
Yep.
Okay. So again, discussion, questions from the board? Done. Now Kurt.
Well, my question or discussion, I guess, is more in the explanation portion.
We're gonna get to explanations later.
For this warrant article.
Ah, here we go. Jim, because we discussed this earlier this afternoon, you know, separate meeting. We're under a time constraint to get the warning amendment satisfied.
Right, explanations.
And we have several weeks yet in order to craft the explanation.
Okay.
All right, so we will talk explanations after we're done with the formal hearing.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, that's fine.
Linda, question or comment?
Comment? I don't support this because I feel that it's a large leap. We know. I, I feel like I can just see Main Street with trailers or lots that are crowded. And I, you're already doubling the number of ADUs. And I don't think this, we should double the density at the same time.
Well, part of this is to bring many lots into conformance that are now non-conforming as to size.
How does doubling the density relate to that?
It's not necessarily doubling the density. It's bringing the zoning ordinance into conformance with what exists today. In other words, if, if you go through all of the lot sizes that are on town sewer, you will find a lot of them, perhaps even the majority. I don't have the number on the top, off the top of my head. But you will find the majority of them are less than one-half acre. So this is primarily to, to bring the zoning ordinance into conformance with, with what's on the ground.
Well, then I don't agree with bringing a, then I don't agree with that because the result will be, there can be twice as many buildings built on a lot.
You still have.
Dwelling units.
Dwelling units, yes. But.
At the same time, you're doubling the ADUs. And that seems reasonable, but you're, and, and at the same time, you are also doubling density.
I, I don't.
And I.
I don't see it doubling the density. I see the ADUs making it possible to add density. There are some lots where people might want to subdivide.
If they have a half acre.
If they have a half acre, yes.
Half acre or larger.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah. But how many, how many lots like that really exist?
On the sewer system.
That are on the sewer system.
Not that many.
Jim?
Well, I was thinking, we're not, not really allowing twice as many buildings in the area because you still have to consider setbacks in the other properties. It's not like anybody who wants to put up the second ADU is going to immediately draw a trailer on the lot. They could put an extra bedroom or something that you have to consider the setbacks at the same time, which we're not allowed to increase the density in. Brilliant.
Good point.
And another reason for proposing this is the water and sewer rates are extraordinarily high. And I still maintain that probably the highest in the state. And one way to help with that is to increase the number of users. Consequently, the quarter acre size and the ADU will significantly help that. Yep. I think the, the pace at which this is going to happen is going to be quite slow. Right now, the economics of subdividing a single lot off of a slightly larger lot and building a house is, is just not there. Seriously, now we're gonna see a lot of houses built anytime soon. And because of that, I was, while I'm not entirely certain that we've thought this through completely, I know we're going to over the course of the next year in the zoning rewrite. And therefore, I think in the short time between now and when, when the zoning rewrite happens, that we'll be able to, to really flesh this thing out and, and figure out what, what the dense, what the lot sizes should be. There might even be a restriction on the lot size, who knows? But in the meantime, if someone had a lot and they wanted to subdivide, it made sense to give their kids a, a small lot to build on, and then I think, let's let them have that opportunity.
Kurt?
I'm opposed to this only for the purpose, reason of, I think it's premature. I, as I've stated in the past, I felt that this should be thought through further and, and also because we're not changing setback requirements. It's, it's just without thinking through that and what size the lot should be reduced to, it's just sort of putting the cart before the horse. And, and using the master plan that we just recently adopted as the guiding principle to work on this, I think, waiting a year, working, or two, working on, and making it part of the broader overhaul of the total zoning package to just me, to me, just made more sense. Not that I'm opposed to it, I'm, on its face, it's just the, the process and the timing. It's more the timing, I guess, is my opposition. And I think without having, looking at the setback requirements right now, it would be really difficult to get a structure on a quarter acre lot without current setbacks anywhere in town. So. I mean, just the road frontage requirement kills it. You don't get it. Or there's so few lots that meet the road frontage requirement with a quarter acre, a physical quarter acre, no matter how you draw it.
And I, I agree with you, Kurt, but I think the fact that there might be three or four that could meet those requirements and could be built on over the course of the next 12 months is reason enough for me to say, no.
Yeah, but this is.
It's not gonna hurt you.
But we shouldn't be looking at individual lots. We have to look at the package, the whole package.
I'm not, I don't look at individual lots. I mean, I'd like to give people the opportunity to do this.
Yeah. Now, if we're gonna move in that direction, and the practical effect right now is that it's gonna apply to a very small number of lots. What it does accomplish in a positive note is that it brings the lot, a lot of lots, into conformity so that if the landowner wants to do something on his property, you know, put a little porch on or whatever, as long as he meets the setback requirement, he can do it without having to go through the trouble and expense of going to the ZBA.
Well, see, that's part of the explanation I disagree with is that, because this is only dealing with lots that have sewer, so it's already limiting a small portion of the R1 districts that it applies to. And I haven't gone through the tax maps and looked at those lots that have sewer, their physical size, but most of the ZBA is, is for lots that are outside of the sewer districts. They're the late front lots for the most parts that are in R1, but they're, but those were built as less than half acre, less than one acre lots, pre-zoned, because they're all pre-zoning. That's where the, but.
Olive Shaker, all Lower Shaker Village will now be conforming lots. Today, they're not. Because there are no half acre lots right now, even though they're on sewer. But.
There's another issue, and that is that persons doing the larger subdivisions can double the size. And we've already been shown maps with doubling, and it's waiting for this vote. So if we vote this, instead of 500 people living in the subdivision, there will be a thousand.
I don't think you're right on that.
Well, I think I am right.
And I have to make.
Because those.
Or a four-lane highway.
Um.
Let's just.
Because we've been shown the maps, the land's been cleared.
I understand, but if you take a large parcel, let's say 100 acres, and split it up into quarter acre lots, that doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna get. and split it up into quarter acre lots, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to get ways around that. That doesn't necessarily mean you get 400. Our houses on there, road frontage issues, setback issues.
No, that's not the way it's working. We've already approved or seen the plan.
Yes, but that plan assumes a considerable number of variants is required.
It will have sewer? And are we ready at one point, at one time to increase the town by 25, population by 25%?
I don't think we are. I agree with you completely on that, but I'm not worried about this change causing that prematurely advance to construction.
And certainly, large developments like that can be phased in.
I feel that as it is developed, that we should be requiring things for the town. And I didn't see that happen.
Well, we don't have a formal proposal before us yet. And when a formal proposal comes before us, we can certainly negotiate with them so that the town benefits from whatever development is done. And you know, they may not get everything they want. They may not get it all in one fell swoop. But that's down the road and we really should be talking about a hypothetical situation that has been presented to us and we don't know if and when it's going to come back. And if it does come back, we don't know the exact form. So
Kent, for all the things you have been talking about you want to do, is there a way to do that without considering major developments? Because I have no problem with all those things you've been discussing. Except if Main Street has trailers on it of the lots.
Do we do it without large development? You know, we're talking about the R1 district and there's only a small number of lots in the R1 district that are really, really big.
And I own one of them.
And you own one of them.
I'm the beneficiary of that, you know.
And you're next door to another one. So I don't know that I have an answer to your question. Anybody else? Want to respond to Linda's question? Because I really can't. Not all zoning regs benefit all people. And what we have to do is decide whether a change in the zoning reg benefits enough people and does not harm enough people, we have to figure out what the balance is. That's what, that's our job. That's why we're here. That's why we're having this discussion. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Kurt?
I was
Okay.
The public.
Linda, one last one last vote. Okay, members of the public. Okay. I will close the public hearing motion on this proposed amendment. And for a motion.
I make a motion that the R1 lot density change be put on the ballot.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor. Aye, closed.
Aye.
Abstentions. All right, we have five ayes and two nays. Then we have another vote, or a motion rather.
I make a motion that we recommend the R1 lot zoning change.
Okay. Motion made and seconded that this board recommend the change in lot size in the R1 district. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Closed. Okay, say vote. Five yes, two nays. No abstention.
Point of order, I guess.
Okay.
Procedural question. It would seem that in voting for it to place an article on the ballot, what is the difference between that and the vote to recommend?
I'm going to have Dan's
I'll answer it right now. The Conservation Commission wants to put something on the ballot. My feeling is any land use board should be able to put it on the ballot, whether I recommend it or not. But they have the right to put it on the ballot. I don't believe we should have to put them through having to issue it. That doesn't mean I'm going to recommend it. Okay? If they had come in with their original one of 150 feet, I would have voted to put it on the ballot. That doesn't mean I would have voted to recommend it. That's where the difference is. It's the same thing with the select board. The select board has to, can recommend that it still be put on the ballot. But my feeling is the conservation one is something that all voters and residents in the town should have a right to vote for. It shouldn't be up to us to tell another land use board that they can't put something on the ballot. The same thing with the Heritage Commission. There are land use ballot who has come to us and said, we want to put this on the ballot. That doesn't mean I recommend it, it just means I believe it should be up to the townsfolk to vote on it. As opposed to something the planning board is bringing out, which is the planning board is making it, so I'm deciding whether or not, when I decide to put it on the ballot, I'm also probably deciding whether or not I'm in favor of it.
And maybe that's what I
Yeah.
What I'm thinking is that
Right. Where in the case of I mean, if he had come in with 250 feet, I still would have voted to put it on the ballot because it's a Conservation Commission that is elected, for one thing. But in my feeling is they shouldn't have to go out and get petition votes in order to get something on the ballot. If they come to us, I believe it's up to us, we should be putting it on the ballot. Whether or not I recommend it, it's a different story.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Next is remove the principal dwelling language in the R1 district. And this one is no lot shall have more than one principal building. And that would be the way the regulation would be rewritten so that we remove dwelling or and we leave principal building. Is there any discussion or questions from board members?
We have two ADUs, we have to strike that.
We do. Public? Okay, hearing no discussion. I will close the public hearing on the proposed amendment to remove principal dwelling language. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to remove principal dwelling from the R1 with this wording with that.
It's letter U.
Letter U of the R1.
Okay. I make a motion to change the wording in letter U of R1 Article 20.
No.
No.
No, that's, it should be, that's just a place holder, question, question. Because we don't know where it's going to fit on the town ballot.
You take a stab at it.
I make a motion that we put the principal dwell, the new principal dwelling U language on the ballot.
Second.
No. You made a motion to put principal dwelling on the ballot. We are removing it.
To remove principal dwelling, an article to remove principal dwelling language on the ballot.
Okay, motion has been made.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor. Aye. Closed. Okay. It is unanimous, seven to zero.
And does that not mean then we've recommended it?
We don't know yet. We have to vote.
I make a motion, we recommend the article.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor of recommending the article. Aye. Closed.
Hang on. I mean, no, I'm not. Finish your vote.
Okay, opposed. Abstentions. I believe the ayes have it, seven to nothing.
Could you scroll back up to that title? I think what's missing here, and I think this is just an administrative item is that really should be, the section of the ordinance should be cited. You know, it's probably something like 40.2, item U.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah.
401.1. Oops.
You lost the whole thing.
You can do that on the side, right?
Yeah, you can do that offline tomorrow, Rob.
All right, next. Conservation Commission, 100 foot setback to Enfields Prime Wetlands. This is an article or a proposed amendment that has been brought forth by the Conservation Commission. And the article will be changed by adding the highlighted text as follows. And this will be, this text will be added to each zoning district where it talks about setbacks from water. And the new text will read, no structure shall be placed, located, or constructed within 50 feet from the seasonal high water line of any river, stream, lake, public pond, or wetland. Adding the text, except for designated prime wetlands, where the setback shall be 100 feet. And continuing with the existing, no dock may be located nearer than 25 feet from the side lot line. Dry hydrants, culverts, and bridges may be permitted by planning board and with state permits as required. Any questions or discussion from board members on this? Any comments from the Conservation Commission?
Conservation Commission has agreed to support the language that has been amended there.
Okay, and we'll get to the explanation part, which has the verbiage which you requested when we discuss explanations.
I just have one final question. Is prime wetlands in the definitions in the zoning reg? Or is that just a document someplace?
It's a state term.
It's a state term by ours. Yeah, I would say defines what a fragment is. And the town has on file the five prime wetlands and enfields. That was adopted in 92.
Okay.
I'm just thinking to the general public
Yeah.
Won't understand that, but maybe you got to
They will after our meeting at the Shaker Museum on February 16th, where we planned an informational presentation to the public about what prime wetlands are, why they're important to preserve and keep them being examined, and where they're located. And I did provide the planning board with a number of properties that are bordered by prime wetlands and enfields, and it's a very small numbers, many of them very large acre. One of them is 270 acres. So the amount of interference on these properties development will be minimal.
Yeah, that's a point that you want to make in your educational session. This board obviously supports your proposed amendment. So that being said, anyone else from the public have any questions or comments? I will close the public hearing and accept the motion. Somebody make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the new language in the Enfield Prime Wetlands language.
Motion made. Made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Closed. None. Abstentions, no. Okay. The planning board now needs to vote on whether we recommend this or not. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we recommend the article brought forth by the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Closed. Abstentions. Seven people voted aye. Next. Water plane updates as required by state and federal government.
No.
That's a different
All right, well, I'm looking on
Yeah, the agenda is in the other direction. Sorry. That's okay.
Okay. Heritage Commission. Since our last meeting, and in fact, at some point this afternoon, someone, I think it was Madeline from the Heritage Commission, brought forth a PowerPoint presentation. And that presentation also contains a series of proposed standards. And at this point, the I think the two people who were concerned last time that there were no standards are no longer concerned. And we're three of us?
I wasn't, I was concerned. I would say, I was concerned.
You were concerned, yes. Okay, there were three of us. Two thirds of us are no longer concerned. You're upvoted, no. So what I would okay, so we, Tim and Rob and I looked over the proposed standards and made a little bit of essentially editorial edits to bring what was presented or will be presented more into conformance with a valid legal looking ordinance. So what I would suggest is that you give your presentation up to the point of the standards and then we will shift to a different document that has all the standards listed and we will go through them as a board and question exactly what they mean if questions are in order. Does that sound okay to you, the folks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could I ask, did you receive the letters of support from the various property owners?
I have, we have four letters of support, which I'll pass the folder around if you guys want to take a look. One is from the Union Church Enfield Center. One is from the Enfield Village Association. One is from the Enfield Historical Society. And the fourth one is from the Town of Enfield And the fourth one is from the Town of Enfield Historical Records Director, Town Historian, Marjorie Carr, so. Very happy to share these with you guys and pass them around.
Pass them around.
May I, Jim? I, I think what the way I looked at this, this afternoon, when we had your standards, and then we took those and melded them into proposed awards to stay. Which will, which is new information for the rest of the board tonight. But we hadn't settled on that language anyways, but tonight we vote to accept that language, or, or we may want to edit it, but anyway. I may have to hold another here.
That's true. I forgot to mention that, thank you.
All to say, I don't think you're gonna have much opposition from the board here tonight, so maybe this presentation is best done at the next hearing. Up to you entirely, but.
No, I'd, I'd like to see it tonight.
Okay, pretty pictures.
Do it now, and then we can, we can bring it forward as this is the new one, and not have anything else other than that. Because at this point, that's the only thing we've got to bring it forward for, is for this article.
Yeah, I, I just want, first of all, thank you very much, because like there was a little bit of discussion last time, so thank you for letting us come back and have another, another chance to sort of explain some things better. It seemed that after the meeting last time, there were sort of two issues that people were sort of stuck on. One, there was kind of a general lack of understanding of what the purpose, why do we do this, what, you know, what, what its scope is. And then, of course, the other, and then more particularly, there were two conditions, I, as I recall, Kate said that she wanted to know specifically which grants required this, and Dave and some of you others had said that you were concerned about the lack of, of regulations or standards. So, that's why we wanted to come back and, and address those things specifically. And just to remind you on the following slide, Rob, or the three buildings that we're talking about in Enfield Center, that would be this overlay would affect these three buildings. And the motivation, I think we should maybe go back a little bit and say how this whole thing started, and it was for the certified local government process, but it will be good for any kind of, of grant. There are a couple of specific ones, this is in response to Kate's question. The ALCHIP and the CLG grants require a historic district. Other than that, we have the next slide, Rob. Other than that, we sort of look at it, I kind of make the example of, of a college application. No college says you have to do, you know, extracurricular activities, but everybody knows it's probably better on your college application to say that you've done extracurricular activities. It's kind of generally accepted that that's what you need to do. So, we sort of look at it that way. So, again, I won't read everything on the slide. You guys can, can all read that yourself, but those, that was sort of our motivation, was for grants. And then, of course, there was a broader motivation, which is the question, we have the next slide, Rob, of the development for Enfield, and I think we've all, you've heard this in, on other occasions about the way the historic districts attract investment. There's all kinds of information out there with numbers and figures about how that works, that, you know, attracts tourism, which of course, New Hampshire is, you know, our second industry. Tourists who come for those, you know, for historic districts tend to spend more. And one of the questions, another thing that Kate had said, because we said this will kind of have direct economic impact on the town if these buildings are improved for use. So, just for comparison, you'll see the second to the last point. For example, the stone mill, the Shaker Museum, which, like the townhouse, does not have bathrooms or kitchens. They rent that for, you know, five hundred dollars for three hours. So this is, if we can fix up and get the grants to fix up the townhouse, that's a property that can be used to actually support itself or make money and, and, you know, continue to improve the exhibit. So those were sort of the two main motivations. I'd also like to point out, we look at the thirds, the next slide, Rob, that heritage is central to Enfield's image and plans, and on the new document that you guys have put out, the Planning Commission, it's number two, and that, you know, and then the gold, whatever, it's number two. So, this is something that is completely coherent with what we're trying to do as a town, and that's both the Enfield leaps, and then I was involved in the rebranding, Liddy, with Ed and Kate, and again, one of the things that we talked about is the sort of our selling points, or, you know, our image, is the, the Enfield is a historic, our historic heritage. Why here? So, as we recognized that the importance of a historic district, we wanted to make it something that was both meaningful and also easy to achieve with minimal intrusion. So, Enfield Center is the historic heart of the town, we won't go into that, we like said that a little bit. The two of the buildings that are in question are already on the National Register of Historic Places. The third is eligible. This is a district that's easy to create, those buildings are all in a coherent, integral state histor, sort of structurally, and in terms of what has been done to them historically. It's a minimal intrusion into the lives of the people in Enfield in that area, and this is no extra cost to the town or individuals. These are already buildings that are already, you know, owned by public, public entities. Another thing we wanted to bring up, and, and Rob probably knows a lot about this, is that it is, it would be part of the scenic byway, we didn't discuss this last time, but the byway would go here, you'll see the first, the first point describes that, and again, the, the byway is, is if we get this designation, which we had discovered had been proposed many years ago by the Shaker Museum, and it's currently awaiting a decision at the state level, is that then we're part of a, of a system of, of documentation and tourism that directs people to come here and points out points of interest, places to eat, cultural highlights. For example, the Smith Pond Conservation Area, it's already on it. Again, it, it's a magnet that tells people to go there, which I don't even explain is, is.
Just a minute. The, the scenic byway does exist, it goes from the intersection four and four A to the museum. We've had an application in, COVID got in the way for almost, well, for two years now with DOT, to extend the byway. And hopefully, when it's approved, we will have this major extension that will go all the way to the Grafton Town Line, and then into Lebanon, because it, it includes both towns, Lebanon and Enfield, around Coburn Park, Ava Gallery, Bank Street. It'll be a huge boost for tourism in the area. We're all awaiting a decision on a grant, a federal grant, scenic byway grant. Enfield was the only town that was selected by the State of New Hampshire to send on to DC. And I got an email from Ed Morris today saying that we are still under consideration for that grant. That would be a huge grant, probably up to a million dollars. So all of this feeds in together.
So the next slider is the regulations, so the next two slides actually, so we can come back, back to that, and just to finish up, the advantages, this is sort of underlying, it's the environmental stewardship in the community building that, that this would offer for our town. So, I guess we can go and talk about the, the regulations. We just, these were just suggestions, we sat down, we looked at a lot of other towns that are similar to Enfield, you know, we're not in Antucket. We're not Canaan. We tried to put together things that are appropriate to the size of the Enfield, the, the resources and means of the people involved, the, you know, the, the buildings that are there. So, that was kind of what, what guided us. These are, as I said, suggestions, you know, eventually that those would be voted on and in another form, but this was just the starting place, so if we want to talk about those, we can.
Okay, before we get to those, Rob, do you have the PDF that I sent? Called Why We Need Standards? The one that I emailed you? If you don't, it's okay. Over the last day or so, I did a little bit more research and was able to connect the dots, as it were. And I'm drawing from the Neighborhood Heritage Districts, a handbook for New Hampshire municipalities, which was put out by the New Hampshire Division of Historical Resources in December twenty oh eight. And also from state statute, RSA six seventy-four colon twenty-one. And if I can briefly summarize, six seventy-four twenty-one was designed by the legislature, I'm quoting here from the handbook, to provide flexibility in the zoning process. If the municipality adopted a neighborhood heritage district, it could do so either, either as an overlay zoning district or a separate zoning district. The statute provides that innovative land use control may be administered by the Planning Board or by some other entity. However, if the Neighborhood Heritage District process were to be administered by another entity, district applications would still have to be reviewed by the Planning Board. Thus, it seemed to make sense that rather than create yet another land use board with decision-making authority, it would be more efficient, particularly in smaller communities, to create a neighborhood advisory committee to the Planning Board, whose recommendations, while not be, while not binding, would carry weight in the Planning Board's final decision. And then I looked at the statute that was, I just referred to, and it says in section two, noting an innovative land use control adopted under six seventy-four colon sixteen may be required when supported by the master plan, and shall, underline shall, contain within it the standards which shall guide the person or board which administers the ordinance. So, the two are tied together. We were not able to create a zoning overlay that had no standards because that would be in violation of six seventy-four.
David, could I ask you to allow Andrew Pushing, who is here representing Massimo Valley Preservation and also New Hampshire Preservation Alliance?
Sure.
Who's more knowledgeable than any of us on these.
Okay, Andrew?
Sure, so there, there are two separate kind of bodies that I think we're conflating right now. So there's a Neighborhood Heritage District, of which there's only one right now in New Hampshire, and other states that might be called a Conservation District, which is kind of a light-touch historic district. Was being proposed as a Historic District Commission, so it, it's under a different R S, I think it's six seventy-four. What'd you say, forty, did you say forty?
Let me tell you, six seventy-four twenty-one.
Yes, this is six seventy-four, I think forty-five, talks about Historic District Commissions. And the bulletin that you read is about Neighborhood Heritage District, so it's, it's that is administered by the Planning Board, which is why it was brought up in legislature a couple of years ago to give communities an alternative to Historic District Commissions.
Okay, I, I thought what was being proposed was a historic, a local historic district.
Right, versus the Neighborhood Heritage District, it's kind of, the names are silly, but Neighborhood Heritage District is, is not the same.
But which ones being?
So it's the Historic District Commission.
When you say.
Historic District.
When we say commission, that applies to me, a, a group of people who then administer the district.
That's right, it's the, it's, it is the Heritage Commission.
Heritage Commission.
Which you already have.
The, the title of the Heritage Commission is the Enfield Heritage Commission and Historic District Commission. Both were applied for an Enfield as both.
So how does the Planning Board fit in then?
I think I hear Andrew saying that it doesn't.
So the Planning Board is instrumental in the creation of a Historic District Commission, and that you're, you know, the land use kind of oversees, but unless Enfield wanted a Neighborhood Heritage District versus a Historic District, then you wouldn't be involved in the kind of the nitty-gritty regulations of, of what that different commission would be overseeing.
Could, could you give us an example of a a neighborhood?
So we, we only have one in the state, and that was just passed in Stratum last year, to kind of oversee the increasingly commercialization of, of Route thirty-one, I think, between Fort Smith and then Exeter.
Thirty-one.
So, it mostly talks about kind of landscape features, trying to, you know, emphasize open space, agricultural lands, the retention of historic buildings, but it doesn't go into the level of detail that Historic District Commission would be looking at, like siding, roofing, additions, window replacement. So it's, it's kind of an untested tool in New Hampshire, we're interested to see how Stratum uses it.
So I was darn all set to move forward on this, and now I'm more confused. The, the standards that you suggested.
Regulations, suggested regulations, which are required by a local historic district.
Okay, so who administers those? Who knocks on the door and says you're violating?
The, the Historic District Commission, which Enfield has combined with your Heritage.
That's oversight.
Okay. Well then, why are we why are we altering the zoning ordinance? Which is, anything in the zoning ordinance that the Planning Board has jurisdiction, why wouldn't there be a separate activity by the Heritage?
Aren't we creating an overlay, which is an additional, additional level of things beyond that? And my understanding is then that the overlay, that consists of, are these regulations that are something SOPRA, SUPRA, the, the the regular ordinances, and those regulations might, were what we were requested last week to bring, or last month to bring, we brought them, and these are the ones that we're suggesting that we would put on as part of that overlay, and that the Heritage and Historic District Commission would regulate.
So, so these new regulations would be over and above the current normal zoning regulations?
Yes.
So, for, as far as enforcement is concerned, is, is the Heritage Commission in charge of all of the zoning regulations for the overlay, or just the, the new ones?
Just the.
The ones that we're talking about?
I don't know, Andrew?
Yeah, so the, just as, as normally, you know, the Planning Board is still looking at the uses of the buildings and, you know, the setbacks. Historic District Commission would just be looking at
Aesthetics.
Aesthetics. In towns, this is gonna be complicated probably unnecessarily, but in towns like Canaan, where there is no zoning, the Historic District Commission acts as both bodies, which has been a difficult thing for the town to.
So, we should not put these standards in the zoning ordinance, you're gonna enact those later.
So, does it? I found out that New Hampshire's, as you also probably discovered, the RSA is fairly vague about some of this, and we don't have a lot of heritage commission, historic districts that have been created in, say, two decades. So a lot of the body that created these Historic District Commissions in the sixties and seventies are now gone. But, the Planning Board would be approving these ordinances, which would be talking about some of the stuff that's already been created, because the Heritage, Heritage Commission, HCC, are already formed as a body. So you already have your membership, you already have your statement of purposes, probably, you have the qualifications. So you'd be looking at an ordinance that talks about the triggering activities, the exempt activities, and the boundaries. The boundaries is really the, the big thing that the Planning Board would be. The boundaries is really the big thing that the planning board would be recommending to the voters. After that, but after those decisions are made, and Historic District Commission is formed and charged with that mission, they'd be then looking at an internal approval of the nitty-gritty regulations, like the windows, doors, siding, roofing material.
And these three buildings were grandfathered anyhow, so it's kind of an issue.
Would the historical commission?
Historic District.
The Historic District Commission, would their proposed regulations have to go before the voters?
So it'd be a public meeting for them to, on their own, but it wouldn't necessarily go through the planning board. But if in the future they wanted to expand the boundaries or, say, increase the, like, the triggering activities, then yeah, it would be up to come back to another year for planning board approval in town.
So what's the bare minimum that the planning board needs to needs to address in the zoning overlay district ordinance amendment?
Yeah, ultimately, I would say it's the boundaries. So selecting those three blocks that are proposed to create that overlay.
All right, and you said some triggering events?
Yeah, and the RSA is a little vague about this. So I wish I had really firm stuff, and I tried to go through other towns' ordinances, and they're all over the place. The, I guess the ideal situation is that the triggering activities are included in the ordinance, but it doesn't, I'm not a lawyer, I don't play them on TV, but I think it would be, I think it'd be okay not to include it, but really it's boundaries, I think, that's the board's part.
Is, is it conceivable that a situation would arise where the planning board would be in disagreement with the Heritage Commission? And if so, how is that resolved?
As in with, like, with this ordinance or the boundaries? Or, say, like, the Historic District Commission decides on?
In other words.
Paint colors.
The way I'm understanding it tonight is the planning board would still be responsible for enforcing and making decisions within the historic district that relate to the existing underlying zoning ordinances for that district. So, so my question is, what happens? And these three buildings would be in an R1 district, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what happens when the townhouse, for instance, gets rehabbed into a commercial venture that is rented for $500 a day? I, I, off the top of my head, I don't see that that kind of activity would be consistent with the existing zoning regs. So how do we resolve this?
So I believe, I believe in the, in that instance, you would be looking for feedback or recommendations from the Historic District Commission and hopefully work together. I don't know the level of that detail.
I think that's an important detail that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I mean, the use, again, this is just the overlay. So the underlying use would be whatever the planning board normally, I guess, oversees, is still in your jurisdiction. And the HTC, if there were, I think, an item that crossed over to both boards, you'd look for input from each other.
Well, our, our decisions are based, potentially are based on law, or they should be.
Yeah.
And any decision by the ZVA on appeal is also based on law. And if it's iffy between the two boards, I think it would be not a wise thing to start out without some sort of a definition and a clear, a clear understanding. That's just my thought.
So, but something like, you say that if we decided to rent it out, why?
Well, it wouldn't be we anyhow, it's owned by the town of Enfield.
Is that something that's not, is that like having your home and you decide to, I don't know, employ your.
Change of use.
To change the.
Change of use.
Amount of it, I mean.
It's a change of use and, at least since the current administrator, the town's policy has been that the town will observe its own regulations. They're not obligated to, but that's, that's the policy is, you know, lead by example.
Well, yeah, but David, it's a change of use, which means they have to come to us because of the change.
Yeah.
Which has nothing.
Which has nothing to do with the overlay district. That's any piece of property.
Exactly, it seems like that's not an issue that regards this particular thing that we're discussing.
The overlay is protecting the aesthetics, the exterior aesthetics. Am I correct? Internally, they can do whatever they want?
So, yeah, so actually, Rob, can I send you draft ordinance that I pulled from, I think, Hollis?
Email it to me, I'm going to run and grab it.
Okay, let's take a short break while we get the thing up on the screen.
I thought we got this linked. Yeah.
The use falls on, the planning use is on the land.
It's not on the, it's not on the building, it's on the, it's on the lot.
That hasn't been made clear to us until just this minute.
Right. But, but, you know, I'm going to go back to what I started with. It's a land use board who's come to us, they want to put an article on the, on the thing. As far as I'm concerned, that's it. Because I would tell you right now, if we were to say no, they can come back next year with a petition article and we don't have to say anything.
I agree with you.
And as far.
It's not, it's unfortunate.
I agree with you too, it's just that I want to understand it.
Right, I agree, but it should be up to the planning board to make standards for a building.
Well, we thought it was.
Yeah, well.
We didn't know until Andrew's explanation as to what this was all.
Make standards for a building? But I don't have to go to the planning board if I want to paint my house.
Right. That's what he's saying is, we didn't know.
Had this discussion several months ago so that we could work through all these, these issues out. And then when we came to this point where we're, this is the very last day that we can actually advance this.
Yeah.
That all this was already discussed. It's beginning to make sense to me now, but I'm really having to.
Sometimes I feel as if you're, everybody's making it a little bit more complicated than it actually is.
Well, the fact that it's.
Yeah, that's what, these are treasures that belong to the town of this.
Really. It's just that we've had an advance, a sworn article that is legal, that is, that makes sense, it's in conformance of the RSAs and so forth. Until just tonight, I don't think we had the solid idea of how that was supposed to work.
Well, maybe you didn't understand what a Heritage Commission was.
Yeah.
Well, it's the information is available and it was voted in 15 or 20 years ago by the voters at town meeting.
I understand, Mary, but so Andrew explained this to our board, you're asking us to do something, we need to understand what we're doing.
I came in February and explained this, last February.
Well, last January, we were talking to COO, Certified Local Government.
And this is the stat of it, to become a certified local government, we need to do this. So what was brought to you in February was the process for creating this historic district. The historic district, you asked us last week. And last time we were here, we said we wanted to create this overlay, we wanted to designate these three buildings, and you said, but what are the regulations? Referring to the, you know, the siding, the roof, the whatever. We came and said, well, this is what we think these would look like. Those are the regulations that we're talking about. The regulations about the other things have to do with the relationship between the Historic Commission and the land, as a land use board, and how that relates to the Planning Commission. If you don't know that, I don't know what to say. You know, we're here to talk about forming this historic district and this is what the regulations that we would follow would look like. All we're saying, asking you is, can we say that three, three buildings are going to be historic district? Then you can say yes or no. And then this is probably what we, the sort of thing, these regulations is probably what it, what it would look like because people are concerned about that. As soon as they hear that, they think, I can't put, you know, green shutters on my house. And so we're trying to address that. All you're asked to do here is, can these three buildings be designated historic district so that we can go get grants, so that we can do these other things? And this is probably what we will ask them to do, the buildings, to do in terms of aesthetics. That's it. The other questions are not for us, they're not even, they don't even really regard what's going on right now.
So our only decision is yes to the overlay or not, yes or no?
Right.
The three buildings, Bing, everything else is them.
Exactly.
Apparently so.
Yeah.
And Bing, if we do that, then we're saying this is probably what it would look like. Then that's another question, what.
So this is the first time, and I'm sorry that we don't know everything.
No, no.
Okay, I nearly am, I'm new to the planning. So this is the first time that myself and probably some of us sitting here have understood that.
All of us.
All of us.
Okay.
So now we do.
Good.
And, and please understand that where we are coming from, which is as a planning board, if we create a zoning district, as we have done a few times in the last decade or so, whether it's a zoning district standalone, a spot zone, or an overlay, and an overlay is something that I don't think Enfield has or has ever had. You have standards by which the planning board can make decisions. And that's, you know, that's where we are coming from. And, you know, trying to look at the relevant statutes, this is the conclusion that I reached and that the board came to. And tonight, Andrew has cited a different part of 674, which I have yet to look at. And I, I'm certainly willing to take a look at it. And I'm, and I definitely like to take a look at this ordinance from.
Let me just finish up and say, I think that the knot of confusion here has been in the word regulations, because we got two regu, two set of regulations here. One is the question of regulate, of creating an overlay, and there's a series of regulations that regard that and our relationship with you. Regulations are what happens in that overlay. Are we, does this, does that make sense to you? When we have been taught, the regulations I brought to you today about siding or whatever, that's what happens in the overlay. They're not the regulations which you two have been talking about of the creation of the historic district. Does that, everybody, make sense?
Yeah.
So what we need to vote on now is the question of creating the overlay.
And only the overlay.
And only the overlay. My understanding from last time when we came, the last meeting, you said, I want to see these regulations, and people started talking about things like siding. So this is why I have, we have come to you with these sample regulations to respond to your questions about what sort of thing might go on in that overlay.
Which will be decided later.
Which will be decided later, and this is why we were perplexed when you insisted on this and we said, well, we don't really know yet because that's a second step. But I think now, I think we all understand each other.
We are on the same page.
Yeah, good.
Okay, so we have to craft a zoning ordinance amendment that accomplishes everything we all seemingly want to do.
Yeah.
Well, I actually think it's right here.
Well, hang on. What, what determines that the Enfield Historic District Commission?
Yes.
Has jurisdiction over this particular overlay that we're establishing in this ordinance? Met by state.
No, no regulations. All, all the zoning regulations in the R1 and Enfield Center are, will be adhered to.
No, no, that's not my question.
I would imagine their charter.
I want to get the wording here.
I would imagine their original charter.
It's, it's in the historic district, it's in the Historic District Commission's charter that if it's in the, if you've set up a historic district, it is then, call it governing, call it whatever you want, by the Historic District Commission.
Okay.
So these three buildings will then be regulated or standardized. There'll be standardized regulations based on what the Historic District Commission comes up with. All they're, all they're saying is, we have these three buildings, we would like to make them an overlay district. That's all they're asking for.
And Rob, what is this ordinance?
This is what Andrew said.
Andrew, what?
Yes, I mean, every town, I'm from graphing, right? So we have no zoning, or this is, like, this part of the world's a little boring to me. But if you look at various towns, the ordinance, really what they're looking for is, you know, the purpose and the boundaries, and if you scroll down a little bit, you want some sort of, even scroll down a little further, some sort of like what will trigger the certificate approval or what the Historic District Commission will actually be looking at. So scroll down even more, sorry. Yeah, so normally, again, it's, you know, it's construction of new buildings, it's destruction of old buildings, or it's changes to existing buildings. And then again, the, the nitty-gritty of that. Okay, so thank you, please.
How was this ordinance enacted? How was it approved or adopted in that town?
So in an ideal world, you know, you want the voters to know what they're signing up for, right? So, I mean, they should be presented with that. I mean, that's pretty basic, right? Like new construction, limiting, changes to old buildings.
Okay. Still. Can I just ask Andrew a question? What was the section of the RSA that you had cited?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's 674-45.
45.
Track with your, if you have a computer, you're going to be able to get it faster.
That's what I'm looking at.
So this is not incredibly detailed, so.
This ordinance doesn't look like it was part of a zoning ordinance.
So this is pulled from the Hollis Town Zoning?
It is.
So.
Well, so we have, we have, we have one paragraph, and this is like two pages.
Yeah, so again, this is just an example. I don't know how Enfield normally does their ordinances and what people normally vote in, but.
Well, was that the text that you saw, that one paragraph? We wanted to keep it as simple, so they're all. simple. So they're all public buildings that are already, you know, conform. We wanted to just say this is the local historic district and keep it those buildings and keep it simple.
I'm going to read, I'm going to read six seventy-four forty-five to the board. And this is off the Justia U.S. Law site. There may be more, there may not be. But what it says in its entirety, the preservation of cultural resources and particularly of structures and places of historic architectural and community value is hereby declared to be of public purpose. The heritage, the heritage of the municipality will be safeguarded by one, preserving districts in the municipality which reflect elements of its cultural, social, economic, political, community, and architectural history; two, conserving property values in such districts; three, fostering civic beauty; four, strengthening the local economy; and five, promoting the use of historic districts for the education, pleasure, and welfare of the city, citizens of the municipality. I'm not seeing what you're reading into this, Andrew.
Yeah, like I said, there's, there's real vagaries and holes in it. Let me find. So six, six seventy.
Twenty-six A?
What are we on the tablet?
Uh, the. I was having right here, so. Yeah. So the sample language is pretty broad. Just RSA six seventy-three and RSA six seventy-four. I know there's a lot of paragraphs and some items.
What are your, I'm not, I'm, what are you?
Well, I can tell you what.
Concerned. Yeah, like, I'd like to understand this.
Okay. I want, I want us to accomplish what you want to do.
Okay.
It will be.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm just trying to, I just want to make sure that we do it right. And I'm not, what I've heard so far, I'm not sure we're there yet.
Just vote yes.
Well, and, and I have thought of that. In this context, we're going to rewrite the zoning ordinance next year, or this year. So if we get this a bit wrong, it's not entirely wrong, but if we, if it doesn't quite work right, I think we have an opportunity to, to correct that.
Easy to do.
Consequently, the risk here is pretty minor.
And as Chair of the Board, doing it right means doing it according to the laws as we understand them. And right now I am not understanding the laws.
Well, I'm not either, but I.
What, what is it that you, that, you know, what, it seems as if you, what you read here, the purposes and things that were described in that are pretty much what we, you know, is.
Agreed, agreed.
I just said.
Agreed, absolutely.
Asking for you is, this is what we want, this is what we want to do. This is what the law says we're allowed to do. And we're saying, can we do it now? And you just say, yeah, let's do it. And these are the, you know, these are the buildings that we'll go it to.
But, you know, until proven otherwise, my read of law is that you can do it as long as you have some standards by which you can administer it.
Not for the overall.
No, I, I, I'm beyond that.
No, it's for the overall commission.
It's for, it's for somebody and.
Heritage District Commission.
That's what we do.
This is all in their mission.
Right.
This is what we're supposed to do.
Every time they add one, they don't have to, they don't have to set up whole new regulations because this is, they're preserving, they're going to preserve the buildings, the cultural.
District in Enfield.
Right.
Then all these benefits could fall, fall out in the law.
Right.
Due to be determined later.
Right.
Yeah.
This is a no.
By the Heritage Commission.
Well, I don't think it's a no brainer, but I'm willing to set my brain aside.
Retail, go.
I am too. I'd like to meet the zone.
All right. Do you want to make a motion?
I have no problem making a motion.
No, Kurt, I'm sorry.
I have a question on, well, the letters got stuck there. I didn't see, um, the townhouse, Enfield Center townhouse is owned by the town itself?
Yes.
I didn't see a letter in here from the town.
There's one from Marjorie Carr.
She's not the town.
Town is sorry. Okay, so there isn't one.
I mean, it should be from the select board. I mean, that's.
Sure.
Idea.
But they didn't have to, but they don't have to get it, they don't have to get a letter of support from everybody in town either, Kurt.
No, no, but it's the select board that controls.
They do.
Has final say on how the building's used.
I agree. And they can tell, they can tell the Heritage Commission to go bye-bye, but that has nothing to do with the being in the overlap.
I don't think we should hold up the vote on that, no.
Okay. You made a motion?
Dan did.
I did.
Dan did.
And I checked the wording. The wording is the Enfield Center Historic District Overlay. This district consists of the Enfield Town Center House, built eighteen forty-three, the Enfield Center Schoolhouse Museum, built eighteen fifty-one, the Union Church of Enfield Center, built eighteen thirty-six. All these buildings are located on New Hampshire Route four A of Enfield Center, New Hampshire, in the R1 Residential District. These buildings are currently designated as tax exempt. There is no impact on tax pay.
That actually was draft language that we worked on this afternoon. There are a couple of things in there that probably, that actually right on the, what's on the wall right there is what we should vote on.
Eliminate the word museum. It's the Enfield Center Schoolhouse.
Schoolhouse.
Okay.
It's the last remaining two-story schoolhouse in New Hampshire, by the way.
Can we add the tax map, law numbers?
And then the parts about.
They were right down below.
Then we're, are we saying that's just fixing wording?
Yeah.
It doesn't need another hearing?
We got it.
Thank you.
We got it.
So it's been, has it been seconded?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay. So this is the motion to advance it to the warrant.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, six, six aye, one nay. We need another motion.
I make a motion that we recommend the article for the Enfield Center District Overlay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Uh, four ayes, two nays, one abstained. Do I have to count right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. That's where we stand.
Were you the abstention?
Him abstained.
You've got floods.
I don't really know what that means.
David.
Nays.
David and Kurt were nay. Everybody else was yes.
Compensated.
Okay. Next.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
We'll work on this this, this year.
See you, Meredith.
Thanks. It's important for us to wield a 53 hours to blame rate. That makes a lot of sense.
We appreciate it. I'll just say too, that, I mean, these conversations are really good for the leaders in our state to figure out like how we can clean up the RSA language and create guidelines to like help create historic district commissions because it's a common thing we've heard that it's frustrating, it's vague, it's difficult to know exactly what is needed. So.
I, I think I personally, and I, and I hope I speak for the board, we would be happy to help you in the effort to clarify this process.
Yeah, you and Conway has been struggling with this at Temple too. So we have a couple communities said, are saying, you know, you cite RSA's, but you look at the RSA's and it doesn't really give you that clear language.
Yeah. I mean, you know, personally, I think this should happen. I think it would be good for the town.
Yeah.
But, you know, putting on my zoning chairperson hat, I'm not convinced that we know what we're doing.
Yeah. Well, I'm impressed that your professionalism and your good conversations because like I said, in my town, that doesn't happen. So, all right.
All right. Well, thanks for attending, Andrew.
I did.
Okay. Um, final item is the floodplain updates as required by state and federal governments. Do we have any volunteers to read this?
Do we need to read?
Do we need to read it? I don't think so either.
Motion to suspend the reading of the.
At the same time, a motion to put it on the board, put it on the ballot.
Anam's consent.
Okay.
Anam's consent.
Dan has made the motion.
Second.
Seconded. Brad got it. Brad got the bell.
Phil has competed.
All, all in favor of putting this on the ballot. Aye. Closed. Ayes have it.
I make a motion we recommend the article.
Okay. Bill's got it. All in favor of recommending the article. The aye.
Aye.
Closed. Kurt, were you an aye?
Yeah.
Okay, the ayes have it unanimously. All right. Next, we're going to circle back to the explanations. And I, I think the first thing that I would like us to settle on as a board is how detailed these explanations should be. Tim had put together some suggestions. And Rob, can you call up Tim's documents? And the, the first one is on the ADUs. And without getting into massaging the language, the explanation in black type is what we have now. It's three lines and it's very simple. And then Tim goes on to present a, an expanded version, which I will let either Tim read or everybody can read themselves. And let's talk about what are the pros and cons of going into an explanation and six reasoning points and whether that's something that we as a board should be doing in order to make the, the issue more clear to the voter who is coming in on a Tuesday in March and is confronted with a ballot and several sheets of, um, verbiage, explanatory language, a very long verbiage for.
It's only going to be in the town report. This is not going to be on the ballot.
Correct. No, it would be on, on a, essentially a supplementary sheet.
You can't. You cannot give out anything other than a ballot at, at a polling place.
Well, we wouldn't be.
This would be in the town report.
Often this.
It's in the town report.
It's put on the wall.
It's held in the town report though, I bet.
Exactly.
It's what's going in the town report.
And it could also be a flyer that if someone, if some group wanted to, you know, lobby for something.
You're going to have it on the table outside or something like that. It's.
Okay. Before we get too far into the discussion here, I'd like to say that.
Are the reasonings beyond explanations?
Yeah.
It's enough for last year.
Yeah.
We do explanations, but we don't go into an essay.
Although, I would suggest we're not doing an essay, but here, here's the point I want to make. We could, we could be, we could put no explanation at all. And if the, if the proposed amendment passed, then everyone's happy. Or at least the board's happy if the board wanted to pass the amendment. We could put a, a simple explanation on that wasn't a lot, didn't provide a lot of detail, maybe suggested a lot of questions. And I could also pass. Or we could put a lengthy explanation and that could pass. Or either one of these approaches could, the, the ordinance amendment could, could fail. We just don't really know. So I tend to favor wanting to explain why it is the board wants to propose an amendment in as concise a way as possible. So that you hit all the, the key points as to why you're doing this. And also, if you vote yes, this is what means. And if you vote no, this is what it means.
Well, I, I think to, to your point, it does put it in English. It, it's simple. I just read what you said. I understand it. And I think that that is part of our charter is to make sure that when people are voting that they have a reasonable understanding of what they're voting for. If you include just the piece that we had before, it's not particularly clear and, and a lot of people will not understand what it is. They won't. This, I think, does the trick. Now, is this something that we normally do? I, I don't know, but I like it. If it's going to be, it's going to be in the, the town report, the.
And you have a detached ADU now, Rob?
I thought so too. That's what I'm.
Yeah, you're going to have a detached.
You can't have it detached?
Cannot.
No.
Okay, Dan, I, I, I could have sworn on a stack of hundred dollar bills.
But you could.
That we had passed a detached ADU.
Yeah.
But we looked for anything relating to it. And it was, it never made it.
That's true. That's, the, the attached you can have is if there's, if you've got a, a deck or something going from one to the other. You could have a detached building, but it's got to have something attaching it.
Right.
A carport could be considered an attachment. Okay.
But we, we could not find anything that said you could have a detached.
Right.
Which I thought, I thought we had voted on that, but.
We never put it in there.
We, we never, we never, it never made it into the warrant.
No. Okay.
Much to my surprise.
Usually these reasoning things are what people come up to the microphone to explain.
This is not done on the floor meeting. This is done by ballot. This is the floor.
Okay.
Yes, the Tuesday meeting.
Yeah.
The Tuesday voting. Now, I would just leave it at the explanation. You start getting into reasoning. That's, that's, that's what this meeting was for.
Right. Well, and, and it starts becoming electioneering.
You are.
Because you're telling people why they have to vote for it.
Yeah.
Not why they have to vote.
Well, why they should vote.
Why you, why we recommend they vote.
Right.
But that's just, I would just leave it at the explanation.
Put that on the list, sir.
Right, right. Someone can do a whole thing on the list, sir, and they can rant for as long as they want.
Right.
But I think, I think legally, we might get into problems with the reasoning.
Right.
Cause then you're trying to persuade, well, you're trying to persuade of votes versus explain of votes.
Right.
Yeah. What, what I, what I said this afternoon was that, you know, the board should try to be as unbiased as possible. And the only bias that we can suggest is whether we recommend or don't recommend. And leave it at that. And, and not try to argue for or against any particular proposed amendments.
Well, that may sound like what we ought to do in, in, in theory. In practice, if someone was here and asked the board tonight, what is your reasoning for doing the two ADU change to the zoning ordinance? What would you say?
Nobody's, nobody came to ask that question.
Sorry. But they did, right? But that was the, that's the public hearing. That is the purpose of a public hearing.
And, and as a citizen of this town, I am completely fed up with us, with boards and committees taking the tack that if you didn't attend the public hearing, you're not entitled to know what the reasoning is behind the, the reason we're doing things. A public hearing, we, we had three people here and they weren't even here for this, this issue. So it's, it's completely ineffective. So it's, it's completely ineffective to getting the message out to the public about what we're doing. And, and, and I, I just do not want to stand behind that as, as a board member. When someone says, I didn't know what I'm voting on.
Okay, I don't have a problem with it as long as legal, because legal's gonna look at it. So I have no problem with any of this. Cause legal's gonna look at it and they're going to say, you could either do that or not do that.
Well, and I would suggest, yes, that's true. And I, I think they would, they would.
And one thing they're going to, you know what they're going to say? You can't do? You can't do a no vote will not permit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because what a no vote will do is keep it the same as it is today.
Well, we could, we could change the wording to say that. That'd be fine.
I would just drop that whole sentence.
I would drop the, yeah.
Part of what we wanted to do here was to, was to ask you guys.
Right.
Do we want to have a little bit more expanded explanation and reasoning? Or do we want to have what typically is done, a very short thing that is just, it's, you could scroll up and take a look at that again.
Can I, can I just, I mean, the only thing I would get rid of is a no vote will not permit. And I wouldn't use the word reasoning. I would just let it, let it flow.
No, we could do that.
Just let it flow.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you took that and, I mean, how?
Cause if you say, if you start doing reasoning, then that may be your reason and that may be your reason, but that may not be my reason.
Well, the idea here is that we, we would, we would vote internally to accept.
Right.
It's a good faith effort.
It's a good faith effort.
That's why I don't have a problem with it, you know.
Now, this is the only lengthy one. If you scroll on down, I think there's some other.
Did, can we, can we first make the edits that Dan is suggesting?
I thought we weren't wordsmithing tonight.
Can we come back next week with?
No, we'll come back in two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to sit down and read this, uh.
Yeah.
Let's send it around.
Send it around.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah.
My first look.
Right.
Again, you've got the no vote issue.
Yeah, and I would, I would, actually, I would just say a vote in favor of this amendment. As opposed to a yes vote.
You're getting to yes and no's and.
Yeah, just, I'm trying to, well, that's what it does. And the reasoning, I don't have a problem with that either.
Well, scrolling down there a little bit, because I have a slightly different take. But you're gonna read that and we're gonna send it around to you.
It's, it's interesting because every town does it different because in my former town, there was always a yes means this and a no means this, always in every explanation. But that, that was my old.
Right.
Separation sounds right.
Was that in the answer?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Could be state laws.
Yep, yep.
And this was an attempt to capture the conversation we just had tonight. Although Linda's, um, objections aren't in here. And, and perhaps, you know, that could be added.
Yeah.
Actually, on the ballot that it will say the board recommends.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not names, but just the numbers.
Just the numbers. What's the other ones that are on? This was pretty simple.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's straightforward.
Yeah, I would put, I would just, I would start with this as what it's gonna do.
Yeah, yeah.
Not a yes vote. It just, this amendment will get rid of a contradiction. It's almost like we're fixing words. It's not where.
I, I don't, I don't agree with you, Dan. I, I, I really liked the yes vote means.
Okay.
The no vote.
Yeah, I say.
The explanation for this one's gotta come from the conservation commission.
Uh. Can you go back, Rob? Can you go back to the, the explanation that the conservation commission did? That's their, that's their language.
Yeah, but it's our one, so we can put whatever we want.
Well, we can, but.
We, we can, but I would, I would defer to Jerry.
Yes.
I would rather.
Well, as long as the name is attached, as long as the conservation commission is attached to the explanation.
That's what it said. I thought it said that there. It needs to say.
Well, the blue goes maybe, but.
Right, yeah.
No, that, no precise, the same as those, the historic, this, this article is proposed, was presented by. And presented by.
Yeah, I agree.
It was presented by the conservation.
Yeah, I should, yeah.
All we did was put it on the ballot.
Yeah.
Yeah. Here's what I suggest, exactly what we, what you just talked.
Yes. Okay.
Yep.
I don't think you need to do that.
I do.
Reasoning.
Because, because it was theirs. It didn't come from us. It came from them.
Right.
Reasoning may not be the right word. I think you just started out.
Right, right.
Words, but then just get rid of the word reasoning.
Yeah, right.
They requested the planning board place this proposed amendment on the warrant.
I'm, I'm fine with that. We get the word reasoning, I'm sure.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's.
Just let it be a second paragraph.
Yeah.
Cause, cause.
And I wouldn't put what follows is the conservation commission's reasoning, because we've basically said it's theirs.
Theirs, yeah.
It's their article.
Well, we've got to say that somewhere, Dan.
Don't come to us.
We've got to say that.
We all, we say. Conservation Commission requested the planning board place this proposed amendment on the warrant period.
Or e- even better, perhaps, um, the conservation commission or the, the, this one, this article or amendment is placed, is placed on the ballot at the request of the planning board.
Of the conservation.
No, of the conservation commission. I'm sorry.
Right, exactly.
I get confused.
And if you're gonna use verbatim, their explanation, you need to state that is their explanation, because there's an error, because there's an error in it.
Yep.
I don't.
Really?
Well, we can correct.
Yeah, we can. No, it's, no, it's a, it's not a typo. It's, it's a, a statement.
A blatant error.
What, what is, what is this statement? Because I did a little bit of.
Scroll up.
Editing on that.
Can you bring us back to it?
Go up to the black part, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. That the second sentence, putting that the prime wetlands uh, be left in the, uh, third sentence, New Hampshire Department of DES has jurisdiction over the development within the hundred foot prime wetland buffer. You do not.
No, they don't.
They don't have any buffer.
Right.
They only deal with the wetland itself.
Right, exactly.
Their jurisdiction starts at the wetland edge.
That's right. Yeah.
Excellent.
No, we're the ones that, we, we're the ones that set up the buffer.
Yeah, right, yeah.
The state does, the state only cares about the wetland, prime wetland.
Right.
Good for you.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Yeah.
Catch that reading.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, so we can fix that.
Yeah.
Scroll on down there, Rob, and see, let's get to the next one.
Well, it's, the next sentence is, well, the whole thing about. Defer the town setback standards, doesn't defer to anything. For each setback, equal to the DES jurisdiction buffer, doesn't, because there is no DES jurisdiction.
Yeah.
So the whole thing.
And I could have said a no vote will not create this district, but that seemed to bring up.
Right.
Our distribution of us playing the place that we close to the border.
And you guys insert your, your language.
I already gave it to you.
Oh.
Recycle theme.
No, because I, I did everything, possibly, today. What you said in email.
Sent it a few weeks ago.
Oh. So, um, we have enough guidance now from the board to go back and massage.
I, I, I guess we do. You want to work on it, I'll work on it. We'll compare.
It's pretty close now, but it's in the middle.
It's a small cell.
Yeah. All right. I think we're done with that. Old business, um, the grant for master planning. I put together a draft grant proposal from the New Hampshire, for the New Hampshire HOP, whoever they are. Um, they initially said, yeah, we'd consider chapters that are not directly housing chapters because their, their mission is housing. And I submitted it and basically said, they came back and said, well, your, um, your connection is really not very strong, which I agree. Some of it was a scratch. So I think the next thing we are going to do is keep the request for twenty-five thousand um, in the town budget. Um, and go on to another grant to help, uh, fund the zoning rewrite. So that will.
That'll be pretty significant, the zoning rewrite.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the next question was, or had to do with the thirty-five foot, um, height limit for buildings. I think that was something you raised, Dan.
I'm sorry, Ted. Where do you, where do you do it from? Yeah, yeah. Where do you measure from?
It's a, it's a question that that we could answer with the existing zoning ordinance as it's, as it's specified in there. It's something that's just not clear that we need to address.
No, it's, it's, no, it's, it's clear where it's written.
Clear.
It's clear where it's written.
It just doesn't make any sense.
It makes no sense.
Okay, so it's an item we need to deal with the re-write.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It says it's based on where the front door is.
Yeah. Oh, the front of the house.
The front of the house.
I don't know where the front of my house is. Somebody should help.
Exactly.
Right.
So, so what we need to do tonight is just put it on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Historically, we changed the ordinance from three stories because three stories could be pretty vague, especially if you have cathedral ceilings. Yeah, um, and so I, I believe it was the fire department said thirty-five feet.
Yeah.
Well, then I was sort of, it wasn't the fire department, so I.
Well, we have a new fire chief.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, I, I think what I will do is reach out or
Yeah.
maybe talk to Liam.
Yeah.
And, and find out, you know, where this is, where this should be measured from.
Yeah, and is it the peak or is it the?
It is.
The eve.
Right. Well, I, I agree with the peak because that doesn't change. The top of the house is the top of the house, no matter what you have.
But that's, that's not the reasoning for it. The reasoning for it was the size of the ladder and the reason for it is to vent the roof. It's not, you don't, you'd never vent on the peak. It's to vent the roof.
But, um, and.
Right.
So it's not a fire department requirement. So.
Well, no, but it was the chief at the time that.
At the time, maybe, okay.
David Braun.
Yeah.
I remember.
Yeah. Because that's what I always heard.
Right, yeah.
And nobody, and nobody ever said, no, it's not.
Cause that's the highest ladder we've got is, they can go as two as thirty-five.
Right, but you also went into, it's not just them, but you also went into aesthetics of
Right.
you put a forty-foot house on the lake.
Right.
On, right on the waterfront edge, everybody behind them just watching.
In front of a cottage.
You're right, yeah, yeah. It's like, you look, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, that'll be a fun one to deal with.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Uh, and the other one was, uh, a procedural handout that we could have available to members of the public that explained how hearings run.
Yeah, I have my pocket coffee here.
Could you perhaps, um, circulate that or send it to Rob so he can send it around and then we can think about it over the next week or two?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in thoughts about it next time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's really just a, and when we do have public hearings with a crowd of people um, that have never been to a planning board, have no idea what the, what's going on. It's just sort of like a cheat sheet for them. So then we take a vote to do something. It's not like we're voting for the application to be complete and done. It's just a procedural vote. It's all out of that.
This could be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any new business?
I do. I have a question. Uh, this is quick.
Sure. Do I detect sarcasm?
That's what he always says. Then we're here another hour.
Anyway.
I, I remind people that it's after our witching hour. It's like eight after, so be quick.
The cameraman even left.
Yeah, well.
He ran out of his.
Yeah, that's it done.
So here's the question. What do you think our most important priority is in the coming year? Now, this is other than being a more professional board when we deal with applications and all those things that we can improve upon. What is our most important priority?
We are the most professional board in this town.
We can always.
It's, it's two things, right? You can't get away from two things. One, we have to, uh, service the public in terms of, um, hearings, right?
Yep.
Number one. Number two, followed by the rewrite.
Okay. Um, is the rewrite, is that sound like a very, very high priority? Maybe not.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So that to me is.
How about master plan?
Okay, how about?
That's just following the goals of the master plan that we've.
Yeah, the, the master plan is mostly done by the master planning task force, right? Not a whole lot of involvement.
Well, yeah, but except we're the ones that implement it.
We implement it and make sure it happens.
Right.
Okay. So if, if, I think we're in agreement on that. So I've got a couple of things I want to propose. One is that um, we make it a goal as a board to do the best we can to get this zoning rewrite done so that it can be presented at town meeting twenty-four. Now, think about that. That, that doesn't really give a lot of time.
Right.
It's not like an entire year because there, we have hearings and notices that have to go out, et cetera. Uh, but anyway, I'm suggesting that as a goal for our board.
I think that's a reasonable goal, provided we can get funding for a professional planner. Who knows what the heck we're doing? They, they are doing.
So I have, I have a, a point to make on that. Yeah. Uh, we may or may not get a grant to help us write the rewrite the zoning ordinance. We've applied to the town budget committee and the selectmen for twenty-five thousand dollars to assist us with the town, uh, master plan. Finish that up. How about we, uh, we talk to the board of selectmen and the budget committee and ask them if we could modify that request only slightly. And that is, if we don't get a grant to allow us to rewrite the zoning ordinance for the, for the professional consultant, that that twenty-five thousand dollars could be used either for continuing the town master plan or for rewriting the zoning ordinance.
Dan, can we do it either or? You're on the budget committee.
Yeah, you probably could. They're gonna, what they're, what they're looking to do is it's not going to be in the budget. It's gonna be a use of undesignated funds. That's what it's gonna be. Um, so that it won't have a tax impact other than you're not giving it back to people. Um.
Which, which, which means a separate Warren article, right?
No, no. No, no.
I confirm that.
It's not a Warren article. It's up to the town. It's a part, it's.
It's in the budget.
Undesignated funds.
Right.
How come we had to vote?
You did last time.
For the master plan, which came from undesignated funds.
New town manager.
New town manager.
Yeah.
New philosophy.
Right. Doesn't think it needs to be said.
Undesignated funds is by the select board, the select board. Kind of use of undesignated funds. It's not a town meeting, it's a designated funds.
Okay, I'm, I'm more than in favor of that philosophy.
Right.
Okay, so what, what do we want to, what guidance? Okay, so what, what do we wanna, what guidance do we want to give our leadership here in terms of dealing with this issue?
What would be the higher priority?
Yeah.
So, zoning or master plan?
We had to choose.
We had to choose?
Me, it's zoning.
It's, it's the zoning rewrite. The only, the only real problem I have with it is we've told people that we're going to do the task, task.
Well, we, we've told people we're going to do it depending on the budget.
Right.
And so what will happen? Okay, what will happen? Mark my words, the, the twenty five thousand will go towards the, uh, zoning rewrite and then, um, all of the master plan will fall on the volunteers. Without print.
Which.
Yeah.
Which we should.
Which means I'm going to drop off actually immediately.
Yeah.
I think you.
But again, um, if we're forced.
Right.
You know, to make a choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree too.
The, the zoning is, is definitely job one.
It's, it's job one because the, the master plan basically called for it. But the zoning, zoning subdivision site plan all could be easily tied to housing. Cause it's. Because.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You can't do a housing development without a subdivision.
Right.
And you can't do the subdivision without zoning rights.
Right.
Um, that, that tied to it.
We, we.
So that with the grants.
Yeah.
Could.
I mean, I agree that the zoning is one. And the other thing I agree is the number one of the number one is redefining the zoning districts.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right, oh, yeah.
That's the number one of number one. To that point, my final.
No, you had your final, go ahead.
Final request, I said I had three. Is that, um, uh, that, that I propose that we have a permanent agenda item, zoning rewrite. Now, what could we possibly do until we get a consultant? I'm suggesting that there could be a little bit of a little freewheeling discussion. It could be making lists of things that we want to be sure to prioritize.
That's right. Well, yeah, before, yeah.
Things that we want to address, like we, the districts.
Right.
So forth, uh, but then we can begin to develop a list.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we don't need a planner, oops, to rewrite the district map. Because the district map is going to be based on what we see on the ground most of the time. Yeah, right, and also just going through and saying, okay, this chapter needs to be redone.
Right.
This one needs to be redone. Go and find some other towns that have something that you like, like I did with the sign thing.
Yeah.
And just say, pick and choose and piece together and say, here's my first draft.
Right.